I'd like to call to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting on May 21st, 2019. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
And Mr. Buckle, to previously inform me that he'd be unavailable for this evening's meeting.
Okay. Would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, item number four, correction and approval of the and/or approval of the city council minutes for May 7th.
I move the approval of the May 7th city council minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any additions or corrections on those minutes? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
Okay, moving to item number seven, I mean number five, correspondence. I'll turn it over to council members first, and I don't know who would like to speak first.
Yeah, I had one call and one email, both of them were regarding the sidewalk that's planned for Fayetteville Park, and I believe some of them are here to speak, so the only thing I've done is I've done some conversations with Mr. Wilkie to find out exactly what's going on with that and why we're doing certain things, and I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay. Also received that correspondence, I bet you did too?
I did also, I did also, I received a phone call and two emails.
Okay, did you have anything other than that as correspondence? Do you have anything other than that? Mrs. Fritsch? No? Okay.
I too received the phone call and two emails, I forwarded both emails on to Steve Wilkie.
Okay. And I just want to mention that in the city manager's report, there was a letter in his report that I hope everyone saw that I think sort of should have also been in correspondence to us, but maybe not, whatever. Any other correspondence that council members want to relate? Seeing none, we'll move to questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. Anyone can start, so if you'd like to go up to the podium, we will listen. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Pete Wyman at 1009 Badger Drive, and I'm commenting on the path at Fayetteville Park. I'm right next to the park, and I understand there's a path going to go right next to my property line, and I'm worried about water drainage being directed and ending up in my basement versus the drain that's there now. That's my biggest concern. Thank you.
We appreciate you coming tonight and giving up part of your family time. We all heard you tonight, so. Hello?
Hello. My name's Amanda Doberstein. I live at 398 Wakeman Circle here in Lake Mills, and my property is next to my neighbors there. It will also go behind my property line, the sidewalk that we're talking about at Fayetteville Park. Phew, I'm not used to talking like this. I'm a little nervous. But I did call, I'm one of the phone calls that you received, and I have a number of concerns. I don't know much about this, being a newer person, I'll make sure I turn on my timer here. Being a newer person to Lake Mills, I don't know much about this, but I have heard it's been a long-term plan to put sidewalks and make access for all to different places, and it seems like a very unusual access to have an access through a park in that manner. It just seems a little awkward. But be that as it may, I understand it's in the plans. I am concerned about the drainage. I'm wondering why the drainage hasn't been fixed before now, because I have heard from people in our neighborhood that they have made phone calls, and I believe them, I have no reason to not believe them, and they said that it's not been responded to, so why hasn't the drainage been addressed before? When you walk through it to the park, it's kind of mucky and yucky and mosquitoey, so you run. So we'll leave our backyard, and we will run through the mucky space to get to the good part of the park. So if this drainage could be fixed, not go into a basement, it might be a better idea. It's also very expensive. This is a lot of money we're putting on a sidewalk for I don't know how many people. I don't know if any of you have sat there recently and seen how the park is utilized, but we even had a community gathering, and we used that space, and it would, that sidewalk would go right through the green space that we utilized as backyards and part of the park for a large Arbor Creek gathering. Arbor Creek residents use that a lot, and they just cut right through the grass, it doesn't seem to bother anybody. I actually have said in the past few days, "Does it bother you to walk through the park?" And they say, "No, doesn't bother us." "Would you like to have a sidewalk?" And they're like, "I guess, I don't know, do I need a sidewalk?" And I just leave it at that. So I think of how the money could be utilized, we have a volleyball park there that's, it's just junky sand, it's not really up-kept, and it's yucky, it's got things in it that I don't want my kids playing in, so we don't go over in it. I wouldn't go in it, it would need to be cleaned out. Well, that would cost money. It would make more sense to use that money to put in a slab of basketball courts that's low-maintenance rather than being sandy volleyball courts that people aren't using. Or a tennis court, or maintain the equipment that we have, or upgrade the equipment that we have. And I think somebody mentioned people from the apartments that are on the other side of that highway, walking across the highway and then around in to the park, which seems like a long ways. And I know if I had a kid in a stroller and I walked all the way around there, by the time I ran through the part that had all the mosquitoes and got to the park, I would go, "Oh, well, this doesn't have the equipment for a child this size that's supposed to be in a stroller. Hmm, that was a waste of my time." So then I'd walk all the way back around, no, I wouldn't do that. I would walk along the highway and I'd cross the highway. That's what I would do. Or I just wouldn't go to that park, or I would drive, park in the parking lot, and go into the park. Just doesn't seem like it's the best use of our money. We could use our money to do so many things to upgrade the park and improve it rather than put in a sidewalk, which I don't think is going to make a difference on the number of people that come and go to the park, and I don't think it's going to make a difference on access. Not to mention, if you're going to have any sort of upkeep of that ball diamond rather than it being weeds, because it is a lot of weeds and you get thistles back there, lots of thistles, which I think we're supposed to keep out of our yards, but they're in the park, that makes it really rough ground, so when you're playing baseball, that's not, that's not fun. Nobody wants to fall on rough ground, so maybe if it was up-kept, it would be better. So.
We will take a look at it. We can't tonight, and we can't discuss it tonight because it's not on the agenda.
Yep. Thank you.
So, thank you for giving up your evening. If anyone else that would like to speak in public comment?
My name is Randy Obolank. I live at 406 Wakeman Circle, next door to Amanda.
Okay.
And I have some of the same concerns. It appears from the drawing that this sidewalk is going to go right where essentially a river flows in the spring. This past winter, when we had a lot of snow, it was essentially a river, and over by Pete's house, I'm four properties away, I could hear a waterfall with my windows closed in the winter. That's how much water's running, and essentially that's where that sidewalk is supposed to go. It doesn't look, from a construction standpoint, that that would be a wise place to put it. You can't have a stable sidewalk on top of essentially flowing water. Anytime there's heavy rains, this is the direction it all runs, so it's going to be running underneath the sidewalk or on either side of the sidewalk, and I think that's going to be an erosion problem. So I don't think that that's really a great idea. Second, if you're playing baseball or softball in that park, I see this as way too close to the right-field line. If you're playing in the outfield, I mean, you have probably 15 feet, 20 feet out of play, and you're going to be running into a sidewalk. Safety standard, I think that's, I think that's a bad idea. Also, with the sidewalk running from, I believe it's Badger Street, I don't see why a sidewalk would really work there or is even necessary. People walk in, only from that one corner would they be walking through that, that location. There's maybe a handful of people that walk through that, and if the water, if, if the park is wet or muddy, people aren't going to the park anyway, so I don't think they need a dry pavement to walk into the park because there's no reason to use the park when it's all underwater. Third, I think there is a sidewalk on Badger, and people park along the street when they have events there, they have the flag football and things like that, they park along the street. They're not going to walk all the way down to the corner by Pete's residence to walk into the park and then walk to the football fields that are taking place there. It doesn't seem practical or useful to me. And lastly, I've been in law enforcement for about 19 years. I see that as a thoroughfare and escape route and a reason for people to come walking through our backyards. When you park in the parking lot, you can run through our backyards essentially, and you can immediately run out. I view it as an alley, I view it as a way to escape, because essentially it's another, it's another runway from one street to the other without, with avoiding drives. And from my standpoint in law enforcement, I think that's a major disadvantage, and I think it's going to create more issues with that kind of an easy access to our backyards.
Thank you very much for-
That's about all I have to add.
Thank you for coming tonight and giving us your feedback.
Thanks for your time tonight. Aaron Daubenstein, 398 Wakeman Circle. I have a lot of the same concerns as my neighbors have pointed out. And just in speaking of the drainage, as obviously it's a main issue here, and speaking of the water, there was so much water this past winter that we had kids actually ice skating on the rate on the other side of our, essentially where the sidewalk is supposed to go and the field. So we have, you know, it's used mainly as a practice field, but it's, it's used, and there's kids that'll warm up on the side before the game, they're pretty much right up against our backyard. So again, there, you put a sidewalk there, then, you know, that takes away from their space, too. And I guess I don't, I would invite you to, to see how, how the park is utilized, what type of foot, foot traffic there is, because I, I don't know, I don't know who's been talked to, or I guess, and we're talking to other people from our neighborhood, and a lot of them aren't really seeing the need for the sidewalk. So I guess, just concerned about, like what Ranny said, as far as safety concerns of that going through there. So I, I had something else, but I, I lost it, so I apologize. But, oh shoot, but I appreciate, appreciate your time tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mike Niessman, 113 South Ferry Drive.
Okay.
In legendary Lake Mills. Just briefly, I speak about the bike paths at Tyrenina Park. At the Rock Lake Improvement Association meeting last night, someone brought it up, and nobody had, had, was aware of it, that they were there. These are the mountain bike trails. Talked to Misty, that's my bad, citizen, certainly nothing here is ever done that's not on the agenda, and I understand that, and you guys publish it everywhere, so I should have, I should have been paying attention to the agendas to know.
Let me just ask, did he talk to you before the meeting? Okay, so we're fine. Yes, you can talk tonight.
Okay.
As long as you let her know before the meeting.
Oh, I try to follow the rules now.
Well-
Now that I'm old.
A lot of people don't know what the rules are, so you did fine. Thank you.
You betcha. So anyway, again, I know that everything is publicized and that's something I should have been aware of, but, and I will try to pay attention to that more in the future. Be that as it may, a few points on those bike trails first. I, my bias was that bikes would be worse than foot traffic and cause more erosion. And actually, I did the Google search, and there really isn't much data, so it's kind of hard to say. But I will say that, you know, from my grade school days, we had to take farm courses, contour plowing is a way to avoid erosion, and these bike trails are going straight up and down the hills, and they're not covered either, they're mud. So it is inevitable, you will get serious erosion on that, it's just, it's designed for it, and I would try to keep an eye on that. Most of them don't go into the lake directly, but there's a couple where it's, it's going to go right on into the lake, I think. There's one area that goes by, and I didn't do an exhaustive search, but I saw one patch of triliums out there, which are those lovely three-loved Wisconsin wildflowers, and there's one patch I saw, and it goes right by there, so it's going to clip, clip those guys a bit. Finally, I think there's a, there's a, it's kind of a blind hill. You'll have to pardon me, as a retired physician and government worker, liability is always my big, I always think of it, it's kind of sad. But walking up that hill, you, you're not going to see that bike, you're not going to see you, the odds of a person walking up there and a bike coming the other direction, I realize, is not very high, but it might be worth a sign somewhere just saying, "Be aware, bikes on this trail," or "Sharing it with, with hikers," because that's, it's sort of already made. And that was it for that. And finally, I just, I noticed that by our house, there was that speed camera, "This is your speed limit" sign in the park, and that's gone now, so I don't know if that's being repaired or somewhere else, but if it ever becomes available, I think it's worth putting at, what should we call it, viral speech, it was a good thing to have.
The sign's over on Pinnacle Drive right now, so they just, they move it around where all the traffic is?
Well, I bet there's demand.
Well.
Anyway, thank you all very much.
Thank you, and thank you also for giving up your evening and for-
As much as you do.
Well, yeah, it's maybe someday, you never know. There's always tomorrow. So, well, we hope is right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at public comment? And I do thank all of you that did talk to the city clerk before the meeting so that this was done correctly, and appreciate you doing that, so. And so, seeing nothing else, moving, close the public comment, move on to the city manager's report. So, Mr. Wilkie, it's all yours.
So I provided you with the home participation renewal, which comes every so many years, and usually we just let it run. We participate through Jefferson County, so it's not a big deal to us. Usually, it's bigger for the rest of Jefferson County than it is for Lake Mills, but it has paid off in a couple times here, so it's not a bad deal. You have the monthly police department report, the graph letter, which you must have mentioned as part of the correspondence.
I just related to it because I, I knew it was in your thing, but it didn't come to us, it just came to you.
Right, but I put it in the packet because I told him to send it to me and I would provide it to you.
Oh, well, there you go.
And I talked to the cemetery people, and probably, Vicki probably knows this, but the biggest problem is because Easter moves every year, it's, that makes it the problem. So, I know she was working on the cemetery ordinance, and it'll probably drop down to Dan one of these days, but probably not for a while. There's the census. Census is up and running. Provided you with all the information, they are going to be pressing us to do a lot of participation and work as far as helping them recruit employees, helping them get people to participate, putting together a participation committee, which we did at the last one. So, just to get you prepared for that, that they'll be gearing that up and-
Are they asking to use the building for meetings?
Ah, they probably will, that's not a very big deal. They're probably going to ask us to appoint a committee that includes a group of people that are generally considered pretty necessary in getting high participation, so someone from the school district, generally someone from the ministerial alliance or a group of churches, people who are active in the community and do a lot of volunteer work, they generally like them to participate, people who are involved in, like St. Vincent de Paul's, who have good relationships with, you know, people who are hard to count. In Lake Mills, the hardest group to count was people with kids under five.
There again, working with the school district would be a good thing, because they do, do that count for the school district.
Yes. I'm assuming that under five might have been a problem because they weren't in school.
Right.
And I guess it, it was hard to figure out why they were having a problem finding an address for them or contacting them, but they said that, that was 19% non-participation in that group at the last census, which was pretty high.
That's pretty high.
Anyway, so those are some of the issues that'll be coming forward, and they'll try and work on that.
Was there any discussion of the controversial provision that's being discussed?
Yes.
And that might delay-
The pretty-
Court ruling?
A pretty significant amount of conversation on that issue. Their position is, is that they can't share information with anybody, not even the president. It's a constitutional mandate, and it goes from there. Constitutional mandate spells out specifically what has to be done and who gets it.
Why, is there going to be a delay with reaching some kind of court decision that might delay the census at all?
I didn't get the feeling from them that they felt there would be.
Ever a dull moment?
No. We had a big meeting in the Lake Mills EMS contract. I think we moved a long ways in moving forward with that, so we'll, we'll continue to move forward with that. Our radios are in for the EOC centers, so they'll be upgraded here shortly. We're still working on a MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the WPPA over the K-9 The county highway report has been done, and they selected option two, which was the most beneficial to us, so we are pretty satisfied with that.
What, what's the issue with the MOA?
MOU.
Or, yeah, MOU, excuse me, memorandum of understanding. What, what's going on with that? Are they, is it something with insurance, or is it something with-
No, it's pay.
Pay?
Yeah, so if, if you want that on the agenda, we'll, we'll bring that up. I'm trying to get to a point where they're comfortable with the wording and we're comfortable with the wording, and then it will come to you, but at that point, we're still in negotiation, and I just, there were some issues that are difficult for us in the way you pay that they wanted, and the way we pay police officers is unusual anyways. So it makes it difficult for accounting purposes and pay purposes, because everybody else is paid by the hour, by salary. These guys are paid by both, so. The request for Ferry Drive on those speed signs, we looked into that, the problem is going to be electric power and distance to make them work. If you put them on the one on the southbound lane, you'll be at the stop sign, and you'll be past it before you get enough speed to make it worthwhile. The one in the northbound lane might be, work, but we're going to be south of the bridge as a point where we can put it in. I did get a request for bike racks from, and I will put that in your packet the next time.
Okay.
I did note on South Main Street that they gave us credit for trees, and we're going to have to do all the tree plantings ourself, and so that'll be, you'll notice that in the budget coming up, and Rob has warned me that getting enough trees will be a problem. Might take two, three years to get that many trees.
Because of the amount they're giving us?
The number of trees and the fact that trees are in demand and-
Yeah.
There aren't that many trees available, particularly some of the types that we were looking for.
And the size, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
We're looking at larger.
Oh, we were looking at smaller ones that fit in that tree line.
I guess, I mean, we were looking at more mature trees to put in there instead of-
Little ones.
Little ones, yeah.
So it wouldn't take forever-
Right.
For them to bloom.
They call them, I think they call them whips, the immature ones single.
Yeah.
Anyways, moving on to Mulberry Street, we have a couple historic preservation issues that we're trying to get cleaned up, Carriage Walk and a wall. We have a retaining wall that got built out over the sidewalk that we're going to have to figure out how we're going to clean up. American Way is, the construction has started, I don't know if you noticed that. Street maintenance contracts are on the agenda tonight. Sandy Beach, the presentations have been made to all the committees with the Plan Commission, so they did joint Rock Lake Parks Board and Rock Lake Improvement last night, and so Plan Commission will be next week.
Okay. Also, just for the public, too, we did find the copy of the 1988 Parks Board Plan, and at, for a while, we didn't have our hand on that, but there was one, and it's not very different than what we have today, very similar.
Yeah. The, I found a newspaper article from 1965 that said we annexed the property in order to be able to build a restaurant and a motel.
Well, there, there have been numerous times where the council has been approached with a hotel, but it never went anywhere.
The library's steps report, did you see that?
Yeah.
Not open yet, we have to upgrade the, the handrails, and I think we're going to do some more pouring there, that looks like the other step's having some erosion issues. LSL reports are done, the radium has been approved, and we are in the process of getting the contractor in to make those improvements. The actual improvements are going to be about $30,000 to $40,000, so the overall project will be in the $70,000 category, which isn't bad compared to what it could have been.
What are we talking about? What-
Radium, that's-
Radium.
Yeah, that's the-
I missed the word radium, so I was left field here. Sorry. Okay, go ahead, you're fine, I'm probably the only one who didn't hear it.
Corrosion control is going well. Probably saw some chatter on Facebook about the water tower painting. They are getting ready to paint the water tower, putting the currents under it-
Scaffolding up now.
under it, so when they sandblasted all the chips and everything stays with inside the curtain and there's a blowing all over the place, so.
You get first-hand view of that right from your houses, right?
Steve doesn't. He's over on Pinnacle.
Oh, you don't? Just you and me?
Lake's mine.
Oh, okay.
Row seats.
Oh, that's right. You're over in the golf course. That's right.
We found the...
Kevin used to be there too.
We have the Riverwood plat that's been sent to the state for approval and then it'll be signed and filed. Rock Lake has just about completed all their processes and their invoices.
Can I ask, do we have anything to do with the McDonald's closing?
As, no, McDonald's planned on closing.
Well, I knew they were doing work, but was it part of the plan to have it closed for this length of time? I guess I missed that.
Yeah, that was, they didn't actually give us what they intended to do.
Ah, that's why I felt like I didn't know.
They had to, well, they tore all the lights out. They putting in all the new automated kiosks and stuff like that, so they had to.
Okay.
Right. So, they planned on shutting it down when they submitted their permit. They didn't tell us through the site plan process or anything, but...
That's what I was questioning because I didn't think that from the site plan. I didn't notice that that... Okay, thank you. I just wondered.
Yep. Other than that, I'm done.
Anybody have questions for Steve or any other item that he didn't mention that you?
No, just thanks for putting up with all my questions today, Steve. I appreciate it.
No problem. There are reasons why you would do that other than normal people walking.
Yeah.
They're handicapped and elderly and who needs some sort of access.
It's something we can put on a future agenda, I'm assuming.
Yeah. Erosion would be a bigger problem in the water. Some of that has to do with the development of the lots.
Maybe we can bring that up under item 10.
Yeah, we'll get it on a future agenda.
Turned out for clarification and information?
Yeah.
Or both?
Or both, yeah.
For all of the above. Okay. Anything else for Steve before we move on? Otherwise, we'll move on to item number eight.
Wait, one question.
Oh, go ahead.
My usual question, far as construction goes on the streets, are we more or less still where we hoped to be?
On South Main Street, we're still in pretty good shape. There are some issues that came up this week that will probably...
On South Main?
Yes. If you go look at all the pink marks, that's concrete coming out. And they'll have to repour it, concrete.
Is it concrete we already put in and then come out again? Because, do we get to know why?
Well, there are multiple reasons, but most of it is grade.
Grading?
It drains the wrong way.
I was going to say, drains the wrong, wow, yeah. That's not good. Big puddles in the middle of the road.
Mulberry is behind, but not far enough that they couldn't catch up, except for that the weather's not been cooperating.
Well, plus, and we have that water issue on Mulberry. We found Lake Mills underneath Mulberry Street.
Yeah, well...
Been pumping it out and pumping it out.
That's been evident for as long as I've been here with the condition of that street. But, and I could, and we all knew that, but...
Yeah, but it does slow down the process, am I correct?
It does. Costs more too because they have to put in well points, lots of them.
Yeah.
Is each one of those points going down considered a well point?
How far down do they go?
You should come and see.
Below the grade that they have to dig to, so whatever it is. Sometimes 10, 12, 13 feet.
And the access to the houses changes every day. So, some days we go out Fargo, some days we go out Louise, but right now, you can't go out Louise because you can't get through. So, it's kind of interesting to find out how you're going to get where you gotta go. So...
Same on South Main.
Keeps, yes. I'm sure South Main is the same way, right? Yeah. How is that going, by the way? Is that going okay? I mean, are we, are people getting where they have to go?
I think they have a little bit more access problem because of the multiple crews, but...
And it's longer distance too. We're shorter distance.
Poor access points.
It's a good thing we're doing half of Mulberry at a time. Otherwise, it would be really difficult. So, that was a good move. We did something right. Okay, anything else? All right. Moving on to item eight, acceptance of minutes of the Public Works Board for April 9, 2019, and the Parks Board for April 17, 2019. They will be placed on file. Council of Business, number nine, miscellaneous licenses. Would you read the name of the person who's requesting a tavern operator's license for us, please?
Kathleen Bruning.
Bruning, okay. Do we have any motion for Kathleen Bruning tonight?
I move approval of Kathleen Bruning.
Second it.
Okay, to give her a tavern operator's license. And would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. That moves us to item B, Fort Healthcare Presentation of Healthy Communities Signs for Community Display. I believe we have a speaker here tonight whose name I don't have.
Ben.
We're a team, so...
We have a team, okay. And thank you for coming up to the podium. I'll let you introduce yourself to the, now, just so you know, we're also on TV right now too. So, speak loud enough so they can hear you as well as us.
Probably, not a problem.
Thank you.
I am Bridget Monahan, here on behalf of Fort Healthcare, and I've brought along Ben Dayton, who is well-known in the community, but also leads our Lake Mills Wellness Coalition, which is one of the reasons why we're here tonight. So, Jefferson County has been awarded or recognized for its work to improve local health by receiving a Wisconsin Healthy Communities designation. This new program is intended to recognize and encourage achievements in health improvement in Wisconsin communities and to promote cooperation across multiple sectors. In applying for the gold designation, Jefferson County had to implement at least seven ongoing initiatives, which were all, they needed to be evidence-based best practices as well. But we exceeded that because we're Jefferson County, so we submitted 10 to the state. And one of those, one of, I guess we would call it a major initiative, was that Jefferson County, as a gold designation for its work in establishing multiple healthy community coalitions to help reduce obesity rates of residents within greater Jefferson County through multi-level nutrition and exercise strategies. As a way to measure some of this work, we keep track of the county health rankings. When we started in 2012, out of 72 counties, Jefferson County was 33rd. As of last year, we had moved up into the 12th spot overall, but our health behaviors for Jefferson County had improved to number eight. So, we're doing so many good things and that's really why the state created this award, was to give communities that are found in Jefferson County, all of the small rural communities, to give them a voice to say, hey, we're doing some of this good stuff. All we did was coordinate those efforts. Why is that so important? Is because we want to continue some of this work here in Lake Mills. We have the coalitions in Lake Mills, Fort, Whitewater, Jefferson, Cambridge, and Johnson Creek. So, we want to work with those communities to help improve the health of all the people who live there. One of the ways we're doing that in Lake Mills is by the work of this guy, Ben Dayton.
Hello again, Ben Dayton, also with the rec department. But yeah, here I'm speaking on behalf of the Wellness Coalition, which we've been a part of with all these other communities for several years now. And as part of this, I think that jumping of the rank from 33 to 12 speaks volumes for the county. And it's definitely evident here in Lake Mills, and I've noticed it from day one, when I started working here and then lived here too, it was, people are always out walking. People are always doing something. And we have such great resources, such as the parks and, you know, the programs and activities that we provide to everybody. And so, as part of the coalition, which we've been operating for many years now, we helped inflate some water refill stations, some of the activities that we've provided to the community, which is, there's, as a community, we're pretty well saturated with activities that involve like, activeness already. But it never ceases to amaze me how many people actually continue to come out and participate. But some of the events that we've brought in as well, like the winter snowshoe and hike out of Coth as part of the Knickerbocker event. In the summer, we partner with the farmer's market to do a family wellness day to take out family, or wellness vendors out into the farmer's market and promote those different businesses to help educate the community as well. And then also, in the nutrition piece, we've worked really heavily with the school district to put in the school gardens that you can see out there on Prospect Street, and then also the mobile greenhouse, which we have out there as well. So, with that, we have the signs here. And Steve and the, probably Rhodes.
Public Works.
Public Works will work together to place these in an appropriate spot, but we have these signs that we can share with the rest of the community to show the pride that we, you know, we're a very healthy community. So, we'd like to present these signs to you, the council, today. So...
You want to come down?
If you want a photo op, we can do that.
Do that.
We'll keep talking. So, just as a matter of fact, there were more than 65 people... Oh, no, you can get up in.
But we're so busy listening.
There were more than 65 entities applied for awards. 31, I have this on another sheet of paper, 31 were actually given out, but only four counties in the state of Wisconsin received this gold award. So, that's high praise for the work that's going on in Jefferson County. The other counties were Eau Claire, Wood, and La Crosse. So, you're in good company, Jefferson County.
All right.
Yeah.
I mean, are any signs to be there?
So, there's two.
We have two, but if you would like more, we can get more.
Well, I'm just thinking going in and out of town.
Correct, yes.
That's what I'm thinking. So, I'm going to be in front. I'm a little one.
And Sydney, I don't really wish to meet you.
Oh, I'm Sydney, yeah.
Sydney. Good grief. And then Ben from Jefferson County will be coordinating.
Probably with you.
Because he wants to map it out.
Will she just stand like this?
You'll come in front though, because you're a little like me. See, that makes me feel better.
Okay.
Okay.
Ben's the reason.
Can we get us all in or not?
We're okay.
Okay.
One more time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all the work you've done. Thank you so much.
So appreciated. For our shows coming.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Hey, no problem. Thank you.
They shouldn't hold up for a while.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Hey, yes.
Oh, yeah, they're sturdy.
They are.
Yeah, they are. That's more than you can say for film signs. So, thank you. And thank you for the work.
Yes, do you want me to leave them out back there?
Where do you want them?
And thank you also for your time tonight, too. All right. That takes us on to item nine, C, Presentation Discussion on the Utilities Cash Flow and Debt Analysis. And this brings us to Mr. Aylers, not Mr. Aylers, but...
Mr. Cameron.
Yes, as part of the Aylers Company.
Yes.
So, if you want to repeat your name and what you do and so forth for the public.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I'm John Cameron, Senior Municipal Advisor with Aylers, and completed the update to the long-range cash flow and debt analysis that we'll talk through this evening. So, I was at the Board of Public Works meeting last month to present this same analysis. So, what I'd like to do is just kind of walk through the highlights and happy to answer any questions. So, if you go to the next page or first page in here, that says scope and objective of the analysis. So, this is actually an update to a plan that was initially done in 2015 for your 2015 through 2019 capital improvement plan for all three utilities. So, we're really looking at the next five-year period here. And really, you know, the purpose of the analysis is to develop a preliminary financing plan that looks at ways to pay for the costs of capital improvement projects within each of the city's three utilities for the years 2019 through 2023. And then really, along with that, evaluating what the potential impact the capital improvement projects and just the general operations of the utility over that time period and then beyond will have on user rates. So, looking at what potential user rate increases might the utilities have to undertake to be able to take on the capital improvement projects that you've got in your capital improvement plan, and then also make sure that the utilities are being self-supporting enterprise funds of the city. That's really the goal. So, if you look at the next page, just from a summary standpoint, in terms of total capital improvement projects across the three utilities over the next five-year period, we've got approximately $9.9 million worth of capital improvement projects. And that breaks down to about $4.5 million within the sewer utility, $4.3 million within the water utility, and about $1.1 million within the electric utility. Of that, we're planning, or the plan shows, the estimated use of cash within each of the three utilities of approximately one and a half, little over $1.5 million, almost $1.6 million. And the bulk of that is within the electric utility, where the electric utility, from a capital standpoint, what we're showing within the long-range cash flow analysis is that the electric utility would be able to pay for the capital projects that it has with cash. Within those sewer and water utilities, what we've got identified is the need to borrow approximately $3.9 million within the sewer utility and approximately just under $4.7 million within the water utility. So, a total of approximately $8.6 million over the next five-year period in terms of total borrowing needs. So, if you look at the next page, in terms of the estimated financing plan, how that breaks down is the bulk of the projects are happening this year. I know Phil was at your last meeting and I promised to bring less drama this time around, but setting the sale for the upcoming revenue bond issue, which we hope to be able to downsize a little bit from what we show here, but it breaks down to about $3 million of sewer and about $3.7 million of water. Beyond that, in 2021, we show approximately $1.36 million of revenue bonds, and then in 2023, $635,000. And that is about, it's about a 50-50 split in each of those two issues between sewer and water in terms of the projects that would be financed by both utilities. sewer and water in terms of the projects that would be financed by both utilities. So taking it to the next page, then, what does this really mean in terms of the impact to each of the utilities? So starting with sewer first, so again, with the utilities, the utilities are meant to be self-supporting enterprise funds of the municipality, meaning that the user rates that come in in terms of our revenue, which is our primary revenue source for each of the utilities, those need to be sufficient to first pay your operating and maintenance expenses, so your salaries, your benefits, your chemicals, those sorts of things, you know, the items that are necessary to operate the utilities. Then we have a net amount of cash before we make our debt service payments and then pay for any cash-funded capital outlay. So within the concept of municipal finance, generally speaking, there are two different ways to go about financing projects. There's general obligation debt, and there's revenue bond debt. General obligation debt, at the end of the day, is backed by the full faith and credit of the taxpayers of the municipality. Municipalities in Wisconsin are limited to how much general obligation debt they can issue by the state constitution, and that's five percent of your total equalized value. So because that's finite in number and limited, many municipalities, and Lake Mills is no exception, need to utilize revenue bonds, which is backed by the revenues of the utility. And really, you're limited in terms of what you can issue by the revenues that you have available after you pay your operating and maintenance expenses to be able to pay the debt. The issue with revenue bonds is because they're backed by the revenues of the system versus, excuse me, a property tax levy, you need to be able to demonstrate to bondholders that after you pay your operating and maintenance expenses, that net before you pay your debt has to be at least a hundred and twenty-five percent of the annual principal and interest payments for the existing debt that you have, plus the debt that you would be looking to take on. And that's called coverage, in terms of coverage on those revenue bonds. So when we go through a cash flow analysis like this, what we're evaluating is ensuring that we have adequate coverage on revenue bonds. And from a rating standpoint, the stronger the coverage to the rating agency, the stronger the performance of the utility, the healthier the utility. So we're looking at that balanced against the rate impacts that might be necessary. We're also looking at the use of cash, what's safe versus making sure that cash is still at reasonable levels within each of the three utilities. So we're weighing all of those things as we look at what sort of rate increases we might need to undertake. Within the sewer utility, what's preliminarily been identified in this analysis is the need for approximately a twelve percent increase in two thousand and twenty. Beyond that, doing what I would call more inflationary type increases, three percent a year, out until two thousand and twenty-three, where there might be a need for a ten percent increase. And that really kind of coincides with the timing of the increase in terms of debt service. Looking at the next page.
Could I stop you for just a moment?
Sure.
You're predicting for twenty twenty a net annual cash, cash flow of a deficit of seventy-two thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain why?
Yes. A big part of that is because you're, we're funding two hundred and seventy-five thousand of capital improvement projects with cash within the utility. So what it's showing is that we partially need to utilize reserves within the sewer utility to be able to pay for those capital improvement projects.
So in other words, we won't be able to, revenues won't cover everything, then?
Right. In terms of that.
But you have a beginning balance. It's just dipping into that beginning balance, which is generally what you're looking at when you're talking about coverage. You generate enough cash.
Right.
To generate beginning balances that you can then do this type of thing. So it's not unusual to go a couple of years and then have a year where you spend more because you're taking it out of your reserves.
Right. So from a capital improvement standpoint, your capital is going to ebb and flow by year depending on the projects. Really, what we're looking at is we might have years where we go for the year, we might not, we might have net negative cash flow, but we are still ensuring that we have adequate reserves, even if we have to dip into it a little bit, to be able to pay for that capital without having to borrow.
Will that affect how the lender or the people who issue the bonds, will that cause them to worry? Let's see.
That's a, that's a good question. The short answer is no. So what we're doing when we look at your reserves is looking at minimum recommended reserve levels that those sorts of folks would be the most interested in. So they would want to be able to see that, generally speaking, you've got at least three to six months of operating expenses, plus at least one year's worth of principal and interest payments on your outstanding debt. That gives them an added level of security that if something catastrophic were to happen in the bonds, the debt would be paid. Beyond that, you also have a debt service reserve fund, which is a restricted fund within the utility for just that sort of purpose. If something catastrophic were to happen, and you wouldn't be able to collect utility bills for a prolonged period of time, you'd at least be able to make your debt service payment.
Ah, okay.
I have a question for Steve, I think, but maybe not. Why is it that in twenty twenty, we end up with that deficit, but we don't in any other year? Was it because of projects we're doing in twenty twenty, or just a fluke?
Well, it's a, it's a financial plan. And what you're looking at is that the wastewater utilities built up a certain amount of cash reserve that you're then going to use that year to pay towards a capital project. So instead of borrowing that money, you dip in. So instead of borrowing, let's say, one point eight, you borrow one point five, and you take three million dollars out of your reserve, and then it, or in this case, I guess it's seventy-five thousand dollars.
Right. Yeah, really, in twenty-one through twenty-three, we're showing that we're borrowing for the capital needs in those years versus paying for that in cash, whereas in twenty twenty, we're paying for those projects in cash.
So actually, it's better in twenty twenty.
Because we're not, we're not going out of pocket. We're not going, in terms of the cash coming in and the cash going out, we're not going out of pocket to be able to pay those costs with cash. We're borrowing.
The appearance is not true to form.
Well, you have to remember that this just shows the in and out. It doesn't show the reserves. So you have to understand.
Yeah, the full packet shows the reserves.
Well, that's good to know, though. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other?
Yeah. I'm looking at the percentages to increase, to meet the revenues.
Oh, in the second row?
Percent increase of user rates. So in other words, we're projecting, by twenty twenty-three, we're projecting a fairly hefty increase in rates.
That's compared to twenty twenty.
Fifty percent.
Are we talking about the second row there?
Yes.
Goes zero, twelve, three, three, ten?
Right. So those would be the annual recommended percentage rate increases. Now, the one thing I will say with sewer compared to water or electric is that sewer is an unregulated utility, whereas water and electric, we have to go through the Public Service Commission to get rates approved. So for example, if we look at that rate increase in two thousand and twenty-three at ten percent compared to the other years at three, one possible option that you could consider is smoothing that out a little bit, where you could consider, say, instead of three percent, five, five, and instead of ten, now we're down to six. So it smoothes that a little bit in terms of leveling that out.
But would we have to go through the Public Service Commission for each one of these?
No, you would not, not on this.
Not on wastewater. It's unregulated.
Okay, well, but I'm thinking, so is this, would this be on wastewater, water, but not electricity?
This is just on wastewater.
Yes, wastewater.
We'll talk water, we'll talk water next.
Different, different page for that.
You have to remember that the financial advisors and the Public Service Commission are going to always recommend that you do your three percent every year, because that's the, that's the cost of doing business every year. The cost of inflation has historically been about three percent. And so they're looking at it and saying, just to stay flat, you need a three percent increase. Then if you need to gain, so if you're looking at it and saying, I did four million dollars worth of new construction in this time period, three percent isn't going to cover that.
So the twenty twenty, twelve percent really actually partly reflects the fact that we didn't take out our three percent in nineteen?
Well, no, what it reflects is Mulberry Street and South Main Street.
Oh, okay.
Right.
It does reflect some that we haven't taken out. And I don't think we've had a rate increase in the wastewater in three or four years, maybe five.
Yeah, really, that, Steve's right, that increase in twenty twenty is really because of the major projects that you're doing.
Okay.
It's here.
But not having a rate increase, then we've got to swallow the canary hole and.
You're seeing a direct reflection of the capital increases. And the wastewater utility, you know, we've been able to absorb the three percents, and then we would probably have come in and said, we need maybe a six or a seven percent in twenty. But because of all those capital improvements, you're looking at a much bigger one.
So we got to swallow that.
Right. And nobody here likes to go through the rate increase process, nobody. So it's easy to let those slide. But then when you get the big ones like this, but in a year when you have those big capital, you're going to take a rate increase anyways. I don't care what you do. So that's a, in this case, it just was easier. Now, coming in and recommending three and three and ten, that kind of takes us out. We have a very aggressive capital project over the next several years because we have to stay up on the lead removal, which means that we have to remove the water mains, which means that we're going to be rebuilding the streets anyways. So if you're doing that, you're going to replace the sewer because they're all a hundred years old. And you don't want to have a hundred-year-old sanitary sewer leaning under a brand-new street.
Right, exactly. Not a good plan. Okay, thank you. So that's sewer rates.
Yep. If you go on to the next page and look at the water utility.
That was, that was it.
On the water side, you just undertook a rate increase that took effect the first of the year, which was approximately a twenty percent increase to revenues. What we're forecasting is the need to go back to the PSC again in two thousand and twenty for a fifteen percent increase, nothing in two thousand and twenty-one, and then an eight percent increase in two thousand and twenty-two, and nothing again in two thousand and twenty-three. So, you know, of the, of the three utilities, and this was the case, you know, the last time we went through this, if you look at the three different utilities, the water utility is the one that has needed, you know, the most in terms of rate increases. It's also, you know, a little bit more capital intensive in terms of the CIP, particularly this, you know, these, these projects that you're undertaking yet this, this year. So, you know, currently, within the water utility, we don't necessarily have the ability within the reserves of the utility to get to a point where we can start cash financing projects. I think the goal here within this next round of CIP is if you look at the net annual cash flow at the bottom after you pay all of your bills, you know, what we're showing on a positive side is that the water utility would start to build some level of reserves. So I think, you know, transitioning to the next five-year horizon, what I would anticipate seeing or hope to see is us be able to use some of the cash that, you know, would start to accumulate within the water utility versus relying solely on the need to borrow. So that's certainly, I think, a goal within the, within the water utility.
So then we would be able to, other than the three percent inflation coverage, by building up these reserves, then we wouldn't need necessarily for future unless we had some big construction project, we wouldn't need a big.
Right. I think that would kind of be a workable goal. Or instead of having to borrow, say, every year, maybe we do, you know, one year in cash, and then the next year we borrow just to make sure that we're being sensitive to the, to the reserve levels. Those are certain, you know, things that we can talk about in the, in the next kind of rounder iteration of this. But, yep. So the thing with water is, like I said, it's regulated by the PSC. The PSC on water rates has something that's called a simplified process as well, which is the, the three percent increase. And I think, again, that would also be a long-term goal. So the way it works within the Public Service Commission is you, you're not eligible for a simplified increase the year after you do a full conventional rate case. So that what they want to see is your new rates be in effect for one full calendar year. You do your annual report for that year, and then based on the results of that annual report, where you are in terms of your overall rate of return within the utility will dictate whether you're eligible for a simplified increase or you're not. As Steve said earlier, I will give the plug that when you are eligible for simplifies, it's, it's a great idea to be able to do it if, if you can. I realize that there's always pressure on, on user rates, and you've got, you know, sewer and electric to be mindful of as well, but doing it when you can certainly helps.
So that explains why twenty twenty, there's fifteen, twenty-one, zero, twenty-two, eight, and twenty-three, zero. Because that's that one-year thing?
Well, it is. The other thing with the PSC, these would all be full conventional cases. The reality with the PSC is that it takes at least, I would say, six months to get through a full rate case. So just knowing that, the timing of it would be, you know, if we showed rate increases every year, what it would be saying is you'd be doing conventional cases every year. You'd be constantly working through PSC rate applications. If I put that up there, I think Betsy would not be happy with me. It's not, going through a rate, a rate application and an increase is not exactly the most fun, but the reality is you're also limited in what you can do with, because we're regulated.
It would also cause a red flag for Lake Mills, would it not?
I think the PSC would be concerned, yeah. That's a fair statement.
I, I do not.
Don't think so?
I, we've been looking at utilities in the state and nationwide, and water loss, lead services and lead pipes and those types of things, radium. These are all things that, you know, we had capital plans that we had in place to replace large amounts of water main, which helps control our water loss. But then, you know, we were, we also looked at it and said, hey, we need to replace a lot of these meters because that could be water loss, too. So we're, we're struggling to keep up with that, which is getting added on top of our regular capital, and we're doing the radium and the lead. So the lead, while there was three hundred thousand dollars worth of grants put out there, our share was still three hundred thousand dollars. So if we're spending three hundred thousand dollars for them to replace it, we're spending five hundred thousand, or three hundred or more thousand dollars for our share, because not only do we have to replace it, we also have to put back pavement and the concrete curb and the concrete sidewalk. So you're, you're looking at an expense that, for us, was huge, that just got thrown on top of us without having any way of paying for it.
Right.
And you look at that statewide, and this is happening, you know, we were at the leading edge of that. We were one of the first two or three communities that really got slapped up. But we're not the only ones. They're coming in hot and heavy, and it's, radium is the issue, our issues are out there, and corrosion issues and water loss issues, they're really starting to pile up. So you're seeing cities that are having three-digit, you know, hundred percent, hundred and twenty percent rate increases.
Well, I've heard of that in the news.
So from our standpoint, we got caught off guard a little bit by the, but it was. We got caught off guard a little bit by the, but it was it was triggered by. The city in Michigan.
Flint.
Flint. And all of a sudden, these water issues moved to the front and all of a sudden, we're now. Now we're spending a lot of money on something we kind of got blindsided by, so it's. And we we tried to come with, so we're, you know, if you ask Betsy and Dwayne, finding meters. Is a big, is a big job. Because they come and go all year long, so trying to determine exactly how many meters we have in each category. Is difficult, then you have your water pumped and your water paid for, which never match. That sends up water loss issues, so you got, you got tons of all these little things that you're trying to keep track of. In order to be able to make your payments and then. All this on top of it and people are using less and less water. Used to be when I started, 110, 120 gallons per person was not unusual, now you're down into the 84s or lower.
When we, we used to do a survey of user rates and we used to assume about 70,000, 75,000 gallons a year. Was about the average household and that's far lower than that now, we're talking probably 45, 50,000 gallons, so you're right. It's a, it's a significant issue.
And businesses just don't use like they used to either.
Yeah, one question, so in other words, when we go to the PSC, we're anticipating a rate. Over several years. Is that correct?
When you, when you go before the PSC, you're going into it. Within the context of a a single, setting rates for a single year period of time, also called the test year. So when you do an application, you're looking at for that year. Setting it in terms of making estimates of the amount of usage, billable usage, the number of customers. And then within your budget, the operating and maintenance expenses for the year. Your depreciation expense on utility financed assets. And then a rate of return on the undepreciated portion of those utility financed assets. So you're setting it really for a single year point in time. The the reality is that might carry you for for a little while, but when you go before the PSC, it's in the context of a test year.
Yes, so what we do this year won't actually get until next year's rate. And on and on and on, so until you spend the money, you can't put it in your rate.
Right, yep.
And if you get the rate increase approved. Does that percentage drop backwards again later?
No.
No, it stays there and you travel with that until you do something beyond that?
You try and, within the scope of that, you.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Generally what we're looking at is how long could we make that? Zero or 3% work, but if you continue to replace on a schedule that's appropriate. You're going to see threes and then a six or sometimes bigger, depending on how big of a project you bite off in any given year, but it's, it's a lump.
So in 2021, even though it shows zero, it's not really zero, it's a zero increase.
Zero increase that year. But what it's, what it's not telling you is is that actually what you do in 21 is going to be reflected in the rate increase in 22.
And whether you get everything done in 21 that you need to get done in 20 and 21, because that affects everything too. Okay, gotcha. Probably something.
So then finally, the electric side, which would be on the next page. From an electric standpoint, what you have for 19 is a budgeted increase of of 7%. Nothing in 20 is what we're forecasting. The possibilities for a 4% increase in 21 and a 7% increase in 23. I really think of the three utilities, this would be the one to, you know, continue to monitor and consider whether. These four and 7% increases in the future years really are necessary, or if you can get by with something slightly, slightly smaller. So that would be on the positive side, but. Within the context of the electric utility, if you look at your total revenues coming in at the top. Our operating and maintenance expenses going out the door, the taxes in the form of a a payment in lieu of taxes. The utility is generally able to cover its operator, its debt service payments, pay for cash funded capital. And generate positive net annual cash flow.
Got a question. Talking about electric rates and electric stuff, is our utility. Pretty well where it should be, equipment wise and so forth, or does this reflect reality? Or does it, are we missing the boat on something that maybe there should be? More in a certain year because of something that we need to bring up to speed?
Well, you look at the the capital plans at the front and it says 4 million and 4 and a half million for water or sewer. 4.7 or 8 million for water and 1.1 million for electric. Electric is pretty minimal, we're pretty, you know, in the last 15 years, we've done a lot of electric work. So you'll note that we've. You know, we've got the new substations, we've put a lot out, we've gone to 24, 9 almost everywhere and it's underground. We've made. We've made a really substantial amount of effort there, we'll have some, you know, minor areas that we have to keep up and. We're going to have to. Keep an eye on certain areas like. Running north, that could cost us money if if development takes off over there, but. As a, as a whole, the electric utility as far as. Stable is probably the best, I mean, everything on the west side of the lake is in good, good condition.
Okay, it's good to hear. I just thought I needed to ask that question.
Wastewater in the city is. From a wastewater treatment plant, we're not too bad, we're at 20 years, but we just did a major upgrade, so we're in good shape there. I don't know how we'll be impacted by the phosphorus and nitrogen requirements coming out. But that could have a significant impact on rates.
Always something.
Every street we have has a 100 year old water and sanitary sewer main in it, so, I mean, that'll take us a long time to catch up to. But sewer is in a better cash flow position than water, water is the weak sister. They got caught and and we haven't been able to catch up.
You mentioned phosphorus and nitrogen standards and stuff. Possibly, and I I thought I had heard something about. The standards being increased in the future.
Decreased again?
Yeah, decreased.
Yes, there, we anticipate with our next permit that phosphorus will get cranked down again. And that nitrogen may be added.
So as far as then. Meeting those requirements, how do we stand? In relation to that? Do we need to invest a lot more? Or will we be able to get by or what?
You mean your crystal ball's not working, Steve?
Well.
That's kind of a crystal ball question, isn't it?
It's conversations that we have all the time. Because we need to think about that.
Right.
So when you talk, when you listen to us and we're talking about, well, hey, if we could get the wastewater treatment plant closer to the crawfish. In some form or fashion. Because if we get into the crawfish, our our permit will be a piece of cake compared to what we have right now. Because dropping into a small, warm creek does not get us a good permit. Getting into, what we'd have to do is buy credits from a city who's got a lot of additional phosphorus capacity left like. Waterloo because they're dumping into a great big river. And they don't have a lot of flow. Whereas we have this little bitty creek where we could shut all the flow off if we close the dam tight enough. That's why we're required to have a certain amount of flow through that dam all the time. And so when you. Look at it from that standpoint. If we stay where we're at, we're going to have to buy capacity from somebody else. I don't see us being able to mechanically meet our future permit requirements. If we get to the crawfish river, then it's not an issue anymore, we are. Level goes up high enough because the flows in the river are are big enough that that it's not an impact to us, so. If you listen to us and you hear us dreaming about getting to the crawfish and we're scheming on how to do that, you know why. Because there are millions and millions of dollars on an annual basis that will flow out when we have to buy capacity from somebody else.
Then you're buying on the market?
Yep.
All right.
The final page that I'll just kind of walk you through is, is really what does this mean for the. Average residential user for for each of the three utilities. And what I would draw your attention to, so just walking from left to right, we have the. You know, the percentage increases that we show in each of those cash flow analysis. Playing out in terms of how it would impact utility rates on an annual and then what the the actual monthly increase would be. If each of those went through, so if you look at the very far right hand side, this would sum. The increase for for all three utilities for that calendar year. Would show the change over the prior year in total annual dollars and then what that would equate to on a on a monthly basis. So in 2019, you know, with the increase. From water and then whether or not you'd go ahead with a possible electrical increase would be approximately $12.76. For the average homeowner in terms of their overall utility bill combined for all three utilities. In 2020, you'd be looking at about a $16.42 per month. From there, we kind of dipped down into about $4 or $5 a month. And then come up a little bit in 23 with those recommended increases. And then from there, we're we're looking at what I would consider to be a little bit more inflationary type type potential increases.
Well, that's a lot of work on that chart. Well, that takes care of that report, right?
It sure does, thank you very much for the.
Oh, one other, pardon me, one other question. So for debt servicing. The lower, of course, the lower the rate that we can get. Means that we get more money and or. We don't have to charge as my, or raise our rates as much.
Right. Right. Any lower interest rate you would get would only be to the betterment of of the utilities and and the ultimately the user rates because that's the. The source of repayment for the debt.
What's the, what's kind of a, an average rate going for now?
Over, over 20 years, right now, rates have actually dropped fairly considerably over the last couple of months. So on revenue debt, so revenue bonds are always going to have a little bit higher interest rate than general obligation debt, just because of the security between the two. But we're seeing still in the threes over for 20 year money with with revenue bonds, so upper threes, but still there.
When would these be offered?
In June.
Our current ones, some of these in here are further out than that.
Yeah, right, but, so you're, you're, you're looking, your crystal ball doesn't foresee unless something happens.
Right, I I think June is still a very good time to be in the market. The last couple of months have been really good, good, good times to be in the market.
Now, the sewer, water and electric utilities cash flow and debt analysis report, were you planning to walk us through that as well?
No, this, the PowerPoint is a summary of that full detailed report.
Oh, okay, so we kind of did that.
We did.
With you.
Correct.
As the report, okay, well, that's good. Hooray, so. And it gives us more of a breakdown of stuff that you didn't talk about, but it's there.
It's it's in, it's all, all it's detailed.
And all of this is on our website. So for any of you analytic people in television land. You can go and see all these wonderful numbers and where they go and what they are. And might make your day. So it's very well done, your reports are very well done.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate you taking tonight to come.
Well, thank you.
Anything else you needed to tell us while you're here?
I do not.
Anything, any other questions from the council or staff? Then we'll let him go home. All right.
Thank you, have a good night.
Drive safely. All right, let's see what we got here, I gotta get my computer back to, but there it is. Moving us on to item D. Discussion and decision and bid award, would you read that title and for us, please?
City Council Motion 19-5-2-1. Authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for the milling, pulverization. Asphalt, concrete paving and patching contract LM 1-19.
Okay. Steve, you wanna?
I'll make a.
Oh, yeah, we should, you're right, thank you.
Motion to approve. Motion 19-5-2-1.
Second. And you're both jolly in the spot, thank you. All right, Steve, what would you like to talk to us about?
Well, this is the maintenance work that's going to be done in the city this year. And there was a map that was associated with it and a lot of it is milling and overlay and pulverization and overlay. Some sidewalk and curb and gutter. Dwayne's putting up the map there. Trying to see where all the projects are listed for the work this year. But you can see there's like Lilac and. Phillips, Harvey Lane. Cherokee Path. Couple of those streets in that area like that, that we're looking at doing that type of work.
Did I miss this or was this not in our packet, this map? I might have missed it somewhere.
It's in the public works board packet, but it wasn't in yours.
Okay, so I didn't, oh, and it's not with their motion? You've got the signed motions?
Yep.
So this is it for us, okay.
Yeah.
So what is this showing us?
The blue, if you can see them, it's a little hard, but there are blue areas here. Those are the streets that are actually being worked on.
Could you do that finger pointing thing again with the name of the street that you're pointing at? What is that?
That's Lilac.
Lilac? That's okay, you, oh, you have to know what you're pointing at, okay.
This is Giles. There's a little end of Washington Street on there. Prairie, Cherokee Path. Landon, I think Ray and Brooks.
Oh, I didn't know they were being done.
Lakeview. Phillips, Harvey and Woodland Beach Court.
And those are for this summer?
That's for this summer.
And has some notification of this gone out to those people already?
No.
Oh, they don't, they don't know it yet.
No, well, the work we're anticipating in August. So it'll be a while, so we're, we're not gonna. And what order and exactly what time we're, you know. We just ordered the contract, well, we're about to try and award the contract. So then we could sit down and have a pre-con and start going over schedules and those types of things. But yeah, that would be the, that would be the scope of what we would hope to do. This is is the asphalt work, so this mainly.
Okay.
Milling and overlaying, pulverization and overlaying, asphalt patches. It is not the oil and chip program. But it is a substantial amount of work in it. It's for streets that are in pretty bad condition, but not so bad that they're a full rebuild. Our full rebuilds this year are obvious. And we have plenty of them going on. So this'll just make the city a little bit more of an obstacle course for a short period of time, but most of the streets are in locations that are far enough away from main routes that it, it's not a, not a real deal. And we kind of worked really hard to, to pick streets that, that wouldn't have significant impact on the traffic flows, flows as they are under the construction with Main and Mulberry.
Um, I'm just gonna mention for the public, there is on our website, in our packet, the one called Bid Tab. And if you click on that, you get a chart that shows all of this.
Right.
So if anybody wants to know if their street is, is on tab here, go to that and then, it's very small, so you'll have to make it bigger. And then it tells you Cherokee Path and Prairie Avenue and Giles Street and all of the names are there. So, and if you have questions, you can call, who, what do they call the city here? Call Steve if your, if the chart is confusing for you, but everything is listed on there. Every street that we are looking at doing this year is on that chart, am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay, so-
For, for asphalt paving.
For asphalt paving, right.
They'll have oil and chip.
Right, but I know some people really get into that and, which is good, but you gotta know where to look. So that's the chart that has, that map is on a chart in the, on the website. Okay, good. And that's what we're voting on tonight.
That's correct.
That's the motion.
There were, there were three bidders, Wolf Paving, Paint and Dolan, and Poblaki. Wolf Paving was a little bidder. It's been a while, I think 216, 2016 was the last time they were a little bidder. It's been Paint and Dolan, last several years. But the prices were under the engineer's estimate, which is always good. The engineer doesn't have to do the work himself. Duane appreciates that.
And Wolf has done stuff for us before?
Yes, yeah, they, 2016, they did a bunch of work and they did, you know, they also did the cemetery that year, if I remember correctly.
And they're okay?
Yeah, they're fine.
Good. Well-
Significant difference between the top bid and the low bid.
All depends probably on how much work you had this year.
How much they want the job. Well, good, and we have a motion and a second to have any more discussion, otherwise we could vote on this one. Looking okay over here, looking okay over here. We can cross the road, take the vote.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, there we go, and on we go to item E. Would you read that one for us, please?
City Council Motion 19-5-2-2, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance, contract LM 3-19.
Okay, I need a motion and a second so we can discuss it.
I move adoption of motion 19-5-2-2.
Second.
I got Mike over here for the second. Okay, now, we are talking about curb, concrete curb and gutter work and sidewalk. So what do you want to say about it, Steve? Anything?
Well, it, it's kind of in maintenance form, so we, we don't, it's not like a full contract. You may see portions of the street have the curb replaced. So if we're running down and we're milling that street and we're looking at the curb and there's a spot that's holding water, we may replace that curb. Maybe sections of curb, I don't think there's anywhere we're replacing the whole curb along the street. Same with the sidewalk, we'll go through, pick out areas where there's bad sidewalks and replace them. People call in all the time, we get a list. We generally try and keep that list in a certain section of the city so that the contract works better and then we replace. And usually they more than adequately use up all the money that we have.
This con, sorry, this contract doesn't include the sidewalk at Fayetteville Park, does it?
It does.
If we decide after we talk about it next time that we don't want to do it, we could do it by change order?
Yeah, we, we don't have, it doesn't really specify where the concrete sidewalk would go, but it, in this case, it would be, Parks was funding that, not streets, so we'd have to look at how we reduce the contract.
But a change order would be the appropriate way? Okay.
I don't, do we need a change order, Duane?
Well, if, if it's accepted today and the council decides not to do that, we could change order.
We could change order it.
Okay. Could we do other sidewalk instead of that sidewalk if we decide we don't want to do that sidewalk?
It has to be Parks-related though, because-
It has to be Parks-related, okay.
Well, I, I shouldn't say that, we could, if we had some money left over from the maintenance account, we could spend it in the concrete and use up whatever's in the bid. We have, we have saved a little bit of money back in the maintenance account to, in case any areas of the hall routes start to go. So all those heavy dump trucks that are running up and down for school construction, South Main Street and Mulberry, they're running on roads that could go, could really deteriorate bad because of the heavy trucks on them.
Mm-hmm.
A certain amount of that is going to be our fault because the road has got some age on it. So if we have to repair it, we're gonna have to have some money and they may have to put up some and we may have to put up some. So we're just, we're, we're prepared for that option if we have to, so we saved a little money back. So maybe at the end of the year, we might add an additional street. Highly likely that you might see a portion of Jefferson receive some work. But we just don't know right now because we don't know how the hall roads are gonna impact the, the local routes. Especially, you know, right now with South Main Street and, and the school district may heavily impact portions of Jefferson or Pinnacle. And we'd have to go in and, you know, portions of Pinnacle are 25, 30 years old. We're not gonna be able to claim that that's 100% their fault, those streets are-
[laughing] No, that's not gonna fly.
We'd have to have some money available to be able to put towards that. So we've, we've held some back for that purpose.
It's a pretty good difference in the bids here, wouldn't you say?
Again, it's, you know, we're late enough in the year with our bids that some people are, now know that they are short on work and some people know that they've got more work that they could do this year.
Okay, huh. Looks like a good bid to me. I'll take this bid.
Uh, yeah, the one of them was pretty good, they were, I'm not gonna complain. Are you, Duane?
No, but-
And we, we've, Schweigert's done good work for us.
Very good, very good to work with.
Also, just out of curiosity, are there other sidewalks in the wings the Parks Department? Things that they would like if we don't do the other one? Do you know? Have you heard of, I mean, is it common knowledge? Not really.
Well, I know that we're doing Wallace Park this year too, but it's not, that's asphalt trail, not-
Oh, that's not this.
Concrete, no. We looked at this one and, and thought for drainage purposes and things along that line, concrete would be a better option, plus it would, a five-foot concrete meets the handicapped requirements and-
Okay.
Asphalt, you got, you have other issues. So we were, kind of pushed that one into the concrete bid instead of the asphalt bid. So normally, we would do most of our parks with asphalt. So if you went down to Sandy Beach and you saw that access that we have along the beach there for, that's a, that's to make sure that handicapped people can get access to the beach, but it's an asphalt trail that runs along the edge of the beach. And we're doing the same thing at Wallace Park, you know, so that everybody can get out to the concession stand and the Ball Diamonds and the playground areas, not having to walk across grass because there's certain, poor percentages of the population that can't do that.
Right, and that's, that's part of what we need to do, yeah.
And so, but, you know, what was it, 16, Mike? I wrote that memo on sidewalk gaps. The, the strip from, from East Mills Drive to Brewster was listed. Now, one of them, we've pretty much closed up, that was the one that ran out to the market. We still have a little bit to do there, but that's, that's pretty much done. So that one, that one was a substantial one. And then the one to Brookstone, that was another big one. But with the bike trail running along American Way now, that's kind of a substitute. You can go all the way from Brookstone Drive all the way to CP Avenue on that bike trail and then you can hop on the sidewalks there or jump onto the bike trail for the DNR. So you, we've kind of closed all these up, the only one left is Tyranina, but within the scope of Tyranina or Fayetteville, you still have to be able to access those facilities. So the Ball, the, the Ball Diamond and the bleachers and the playground areas, you still have to be able to have some type of hard access for, for those minority, those ADA-related populations to be able to get to those. And that's, that's why we put those walkways internally in the park. Fayetteville's a little bit more difficult because you've got that Ball Diamond set up there. The only debate that we probably would really, the drainage is a problem. I, I don't think that any of the other ones are, but the drainage was. The, but the long-term use of Fayetteville Park, and I don't know that a baseball diamond is a long-term use. So if you set up soccer fields there and it became a, more of a soccer field area, how would that work? Those are kind of some questions that maybe the Parks Board would like to finalize before they send up a recommendation on where those sidewalks should go.
Hold on there. Make sure we know what we're doing. Okay, so any more questions on this? Motion for curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance. Anything else from council? Questions, comments, otherwise we'll do a vote. We're okay with the vote? We're okay with the vote, please take the vote.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, moving along to item F. Would you read that resolution title, please?
Resolution 19-27, petition for county highway aid.
Okay, I'm getting there. Do I have a motion? And it's, well, do we need a motion? Yes, resolution 19-27, we need a motion, right? Okay, I need a motion.
I'll move adoption of resolution 19-27. Second.
Okay. Comments from Steve? Anything, is this housekeeping?
This is pretty much housekeeping. We do this every year. We put, we put a little money in this fund. Excuse me. And then the county matches it. So if we put $3,000 in, they put $3,000 in, we get $6,000. And the only thing that we, they ask is that we consider them first for, for certain types of work.
Oh.
The last two years, we've had them do our oil and chip.
Uh-huh.
They, that's paid off very well for us.
Okay, so it's really kind of cut and dried, not a big issue. Anybody have concerns or questions on it? Seeing none, call the question, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, resolution 19-28. Would you read that one, please, when you get that far?
Resolution 19-28, altering and relocating a bike trail easement created by Certified Survey Map 4676 and located on parcel 24607131341002.
Okay, and this is resolution 19-28, is there a motion?
I move adoption of resolution 19-28.
Second.
Okay. Okay, um, do we want to, this is-
I can give you an idea and then Dan can follow up.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Historically, we had a bike trail that ran along the north edge of Vision Fitness and the south edge of APV, which is now Selgin. And you could see the connection point there where that one trail comes out to Enterprise Drive. We didn't get it finished across there and then when Hammerhead bought it, they wanted to fence in their north end. And so in, in exchange, we said, well, you give us a bike trail along the south edge and we'll vacate that bike trail. Now, we can't vacate all of it because there's electric there, but that didn't bother them, they just didn't want a bike trail running through their fenced-in storage area, so. But they've asked that in exchange for the one on the south side, we provide them with a vacation notice on the north one. So that's what this is about. And Dan's been working with their attorneys and got all the agreements in place and-
Basically, check out the map, Certified Survey Map 4676, and you'll see an easement recorded and reserved all the way around the map. There is specifically a bike trail located at the north section of the map. All we're doing with this, the infrastructure, the utility easements remain on the north side and all the way around the CSM. However, all the way around the lot, however, the bike trail is being relocated to the south. The resolution itself is intended to be, be a recorded document. Because the bike, bike trails haven't been built at this point, there's not a right-of-way there, they're merely areas on the map that are identified. So I believe that this is an effective way to relocate those easements in a very efficient way to do that.
Statutes are weird about bike trails. They're, they're considered like sidewalks and streets and so you can't just vaca, you just can't change the easement. You gotta actually have the council vacate one and designate another.
Okay, so on this resolution, are we doing both at the same time or just vacating?
No, we're just doing the one now. We'll get the easement and then we'll-
Really what you're doing is relocating the bike trail on the CSM from the north portion to the southern portion-
Okay.
-in accordance with the legal description that are provided.
Then will we do the-
Second card?
Vacation.
The vacation?
Well, so if it's relocated, it really doesn't need to be vacated, that's the difference. If the, if it had been dedicated in the past, there would be an extra step that's necessary in vacating it. But because it's not built to this point, we can just state it is currently on this map and we are relocating it to the south.
Oh.
The council resolution should appease the county and certainly does appease at this point the, the party that owns the, the property.
Okay.
Could the county step in and say we need to do another step?
I've had conversations with them and my contention is that this is an effective way to accomplish what we're attempting to do. Could they say that more is necessary? Yes, but I don't anticipate that specifically because there isn't a dedicated right, dedicated right-of-way here. There isn't a bike trail that has been built to this point.
Okay. For once, not getting something done pays off.
Well, the easements were, are already there. I mean, we have easements all the way around the parcel. It's, it's, we're at a point where we're prepared to build the bike trail, the preferred spot is on the south side. So everyone has kind of viewed this as, you know, a fluid exchange. We're, we're getting to the point where the bike trail is going to be placed, it's going to be placed on the south side of-
to be placed on the south side alongside American Way, so, we're there. If you want the full story, I can give it to you. It had to do with Ted Whitcomb, and the fact that he didn't ask about what else was going in that easement before he put in his electric, and his utility box sat right in the middle of where the bike trail would go, and it was very expensive to replace, so we were debating this very thing from the beginning on.
How long ago was that? Probably.
Almost twenty years.
Amazing things, okay. But this resolution will take care of this part of the problem. Anybody else have questions, concerns, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
We got it, we almost All right. Moving on to item H, ordinance twelve oh four, would you read, this is a second reading, so just reading the title, correct?
Yep. Ordinance twelve zero four, in ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, parcel identification number zero zero two, zero seven one four, zero seven three two, zero zero six.
Oh, I'm trying to remember, did we have any changes at the last meeting on this? No, okay, so, this is just marching along, it's Mary Way till the next meeting. Okay, anybody have questions or comments? Seeing none, moving on to ordinance twelve oh five, would you read the title for that, please, it's also second reading?
Ordinance twelve oh five, amending chapter two seventy-nine, building construction, article thirty-two, water and sewer mains and service pipes.
And, this one is also just marching along, through third reading, next meeting, okay, sounds good. That leaves us with item number ten, recommendations for future agendas, which I think we do have. So, does somebody want to bring that up?
Yeah, I guess we should discuss the sidewalk
Fayetteville.
in Fayetteville Park.
Fayetteville Park, yeah, I really think we need to look at that, too.
Yeah, to make sure we're covering everything.
I, I am in favor
Especially if there's
of making sure that handicap gets accessibility, maybe there's a better way to do it than what we're looking at?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
I'm just worried we're, we might cause more drainage issues and I just, I'd like to have us look at it again. I don't remember us discussing it, maybe it was just part of the Parks
Steve, what about, you, was it talked about recently in the Parks Department?
Don't look at me, I didn't.
I don't.
I don't know where it came from, it showed up this morning.
Do we need to ask the Parks Department to look at that?
That's what I, that's what I'd start with, I'd ask them
Yeah, for spending their money. Yeah, the
On their recreation plan right now, maybe they could
And you have a meeting coming up again?
On the twelfth.
Could we put that on, is it time enough to put that on the agenda?
We can get it on the agenda.
Okay, let's do that, I'd like to have the Parks Department look at this, and, and share with them if, if we could get those letters copies to the Parks Board members for them to know
Oh, right, yeah, the, what the people have said.
What the people are concerned about?
Yep.
So is that something that, can you even do that, Steve?
No, we'll have the clerk handle.
Okay, got it.
The clerk put it in there.
Okay.
She can put them in the
Yeah, if you can just send them to me, I'll put them
I did forward both of them to Heather this morning.
Oh, yeah, perfect.
Yep.
Okay, and then forward those to the Parks Board members, and it'll be on the next agenda for the Parks Board, and that would bring it back
I got it.
Would it automatically, then, do we want to have it put on, on the council agenda for the next meeting after the Parks Board?
I don't know, we'll, we'll have to do a little research, figure things out, too, I don't know if we'll get it all done, just the very first time we talk about it.
All right. You're just not magic, you don't have, yeah, I know.
So this time it's just going to Parks Board, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, okay, do we have anything else that we want to put on the next meeting agendas? That's not already there? Other way, I don't have anything further. How's our timeline on our grant thing?
It's June first is the deadline.
Okay, oh, June first, that's, whoa.
You got thirty days, and I think they're going to
Oh, the thirty days after June first?
Oh, no, no, two weeks. So, yeah, that shouldn't be any problem, I, I think they're
So that'll be on our next agenda?
No.
No.
You already proved it, there'll be
Okay, so we have done everything we need to do, nothing has to come back to us yet?
Uh, the only
All right.
Maybe, I, I think we'll and, let me see if I can phrase this correctly, when I left here at the last meeting, I thought that we were supposed to present the Sandy Beach Concept to all these committees.
Right.
There was some debate about that, and so, we had both the concept and the boat launch presented to Rock Lake last night. But, as a whole, we did the concept for the whole beach, and so at some point in time, we might come back with that concept and all the comments, and see what you, how you guys want to fold that in, um, to the overall beach concept.
Is that what the planning commission's going to be looking at, too?
Yeah, planning commission will look at that, too.
Yeah, that's next week?
Yes.
Actually, specifically down the road, when we get to the point of working with the restaurant, the plan commission has to approve the restaurant specifically because it's constructing a building, but when we get to that point, we'll probably have to do a referendum anyway.
And we've got a lot of work to do before that.
Unless we're going to build it for less than a half a million dollars, I don't know what the restaurant's going to cost.
I don't either, and that's something that I don't pretend to know a lot about. Um, so we'll, we'll kind of, we've been in working with people who are interested in having a restaurant there.
Good.
And she are saying, you know, if you're going to build a restaurant, depending what type of restaurant you're looking at, building changes what you need, so
How much difference is there between what Meeden Hunt proposed versus what some of these other prospective people are looking at?
I think Meeden Hunt was a full commercial kitchen with a banquet facility and, and a full bar restaurant with a nice, they had a restaurant above and a banquet facility below with a deck out over the one end, so that you could sit out on the deck and look out over the beach.
Yeah.
It was a pretty nice, it was a pretty nice facility, um, you know, you have to look at that weight and scale. It also depends on how, you know, certain features of tid number five continue to develop.
Is that's part of it?
Well
Yes? Yes, no?
When I look at, at the, if you look at it as a pure banquet facility, I, I'm pretty sure, based on my experience here, every weekend you could rent that out for a wedding.
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons we want to do it.
Right, but if you
We have a need for that kind of space in, in Lake Mills.
Right, but the restaurant above, if you're going to make that year-round, then having a population down there that helps support it is important, and so, you know, how that impacts the overall scope of the development will, you know, will determine who's interested and, and, uh, what their viability is. You know, if you're looking at four or five condo developments along Sandy Beach Road, um, and then some along topo single-family development, there's enough population there now that, that you can start to support a, a restaurant on the south side.
Oh, you're talking about the condos on the east side of South Main?
Yeah, there would be, there, there's also some proposals for land south of Sandy Beach Road, um, near Rotary Park, uh, used to be the old Fiber Dome facility.
Oh, really, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so you, you could see, you know
That will increase in
Condos and, and, uh, single-family homes in that region, yeah. You could see a, a substantial population that would start to be able to support some commercial development down there.
A denser population, Sandy Beach Road.
I wonder how you'd take that?
Would, would there ever be, would there ever be a time when the trailer court would become year-round?
I don't recommend it.
Okay, it's not something that's, look, it's not on the horizon that we have.
It makes it a, the trailer park we are using as a holding land use, right?
Yes.
So some point in the future, we may do some type of park development in that area, and it's much easier to move from a
Yeah, a summer trailer
A summer trailer use than a year-round trailer use, because
Well, I just thought I'd ask.
You have to, in order to be able to remove residents from a year-round, you really, you, it would cost you a lot of money.
Okay, we don't want to do that, no, no, okay, that's fine, and I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, well, I think that finishes our meeting.
It does, yeah, I had one question.
Oh, good, another question?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay, no, go, go for it.
Uh, I know we're getting the water tower down, obviously, and we're only putting the, the Lake Mills up there, do we have something else that we need to schedule with Cream City as far as making a, yeah, for their
Branding.
Branding.
I've been working on a memo this week, I will, I, hopefully I'll get it out to you maybe the middle or end of next week.
Okay.
And we can, then we can talk about when we'll schedule again. I have a
Thank you.
I did a, the last two weeks I've done a lot of research, and I think I, I can help us focus on it.
Awesome.
And maybe give us some good ideas.
Yeah, I think that's what we need.
But that won't affect the water tower, because we already know all we can put on there is sit, is Lake Mills.
Yep.
Okay, so
I think it should have been a big smiley face.
Doug loves his smiley face.
I like, I like the disco ball idea.
Disco ball, yes, we just have all kinds of great ideas. All right, meeting adjourned.